We have a quorum, please join me in reciting the Pledge of Legits.
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America and to the republic which stands on one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And next, James, please read our Fenton mission beliefs and bison way statement.
Yes, sir. Our Fenton mission statement, cultivate successful, passionate, empowered learners through rigor, relevance, and relationships. Our Fenton belief statement, successful, passionate, empowered learners thrive when we provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment, diversity, equity, and inclusion unify our community. School and home collaborate as one. We champion innovative teaching and engage learning with state-of-the-art facilities. We infuse social emotion learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibility. We immerse students in authentic life experiences. The bison way. Students and adults at Fenton High School create a safe, caring, empathetic environment where we believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together, and hold each other to high expectations to become the leaders and innovators of the future.
Thank you, James. Mary, do we have any public comments?
Yes, we do this evening.
Okay, everybody signed in, we're good?
Oh, I did ask if everyone was signed in and they responded yes.
Okay, great.
If time allows, we have thirteen speakers.
Thirteen speakers? And just to set the precedence, as a reminder, public comments are limited to three minutes, will give or take, and then per speaker with a limit this evening of thirty minutes. So, let's begin.
Stephanie Downen.
Hi, good evening. My name is Stephanie Downen. I am in my eighteenth year here as a science teacher. My favorite thing about Fenton has always been our students, they're incredible. I'm aware we are in the middle of contract negotiations. It is very important to me that the Board of Education and the Association negotiate a fair contract. Thank you.
Can we just make sure the mics are on? Her mic is on?
Jim, is the mic on? It's on.
No, no, I could hear you.
Thank you, we heard you, thank you.
Okay. Next speaker, Abra Billman.
Hello, my name is Abra Billman, and this is my seventeenth year teaching at Fenton High School. And my absolute favorite thing about this school are the students, as well as my incredible colleagues, and I would like us to have a fair negotiated contract. Thank you.
Next speaker is Mike Mitchell.
Good evening. For those of you who do not know me, I'm Dr. Mike Mitchell. I'd like to thank the Board of Education for allowing me to speak tonight. As some of you may already know, earlier this year I submitted my letter with the intent to retire at the end of the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, at which time I will have spent twenty-seven years here at Fenton, over a thirty-three-year career. Fenton is not just a place for me to work, Fenton has been a special place for my family and myself. We've worked at food drives together, we have seen several plays, concerts, over the past twenty-three years. I've gone to weddings of former students, as well as funerals of their loved ones. Fenton is my second home. Well, if anybody were to ask me what I love about Fenton, I'd honestly have to say, I have to come up with one thing, I don't even know how I do that. But I think if I had to put it into words, Fenton has always been a place that believes in working together to put students first. And that's what the back of this shirt says. I'm aware that we're in the middle of contract negotiations, and it is important to me that the Board of Education and our Association negotiate a fair contract in the spirit of those words. Thank you all.
Next speaker, Paul Welsh.
Good evening, my name is Paul Welsh, I'm a school counselor here at Fenton, and I've been here for nine years. And I want to thank all of you, members of the school board, for serving, for doing what you're doing, because we need you to do this for our students. I stand here tonight in solidarity with my brothers and sisters in the Fenton Education Association, also in solidarity with the thousands of teachers and educators on the streets in Los Angeles. They serve as a powerful example of our collective action. Of course, I'm aware that we're in the midst of contract negotiations, and it's important to me that the members of this Board of Education execute your responsibility as elected officials and negotiate a fair contract with our Association. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker, Kelly Mullins.
Is it working?
Yeah.
It is? You can't tell over there at all. All right. Good evening, Mr. Ting Pao Pong, Mr. On Tango, members of the board. My name is Kelly Mullins, and I've been a teacher here at Fenton for almost sixteen years in the social studies department. My favorite thing about Fenton is the students, hands down. But like Dr. Mitchell, it is really tough to pick just one when I'm surrounded by so many great colleagues. Because we are in negotiations, I want you to know that it is important to me that the Board of Education and the Association negotiate a fair contract. Thank you for your time.
Okay, next speaker, Amy Vasquez.
Hi, my name is Amy Vasquez, thank you for listening to us. I've been a teacher at Fenton for four years, and I love it here. My favorite thing about Fenton is the students and the supportive community. I am aware we are in the midst of a contract negotiation. It is important to me that the Board of Education and the Association negotiate a fair contract.
Next speaker, Michael Baker.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Mike Baker, and I've been a teacher here at Fenton for ten years. And like some of my colleagues have said, it's very hard to narrow down a single favorite thing, but it's because the entire community here at Fenton is incredible. And I've been so blessed to have so many incredible uplifting moments with all members of that community, from students to my colleagues, to parents, administrators, and the custodians and maintenance workers who keep this place running day in and day out. Over my career, there's been countless positive, amazing experiences that I've had here. Everyone in this community who believes in the power of education and the mission of FHS to educate, to inspire, going back a few years. I believe that strong contracts, which attract and retain top talent, are a key to keeping Fenton great. And it's important to me that the Board of Education and the Association negotiate a fair contract. Thank you.
Next speaker, Don Kane.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Don Kane, and I've been a teacher here at Fenton for ten years. My favorite thing about Fenton is the incredible support and fair treatment that we receive so we can spend our energy on what's most important, that is educating our students. I'm aware that we're in the midst of contract negotiations, and it's important to me that the Board of Education and the Association negotiate a fair contract. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Mike Lauderbein.
Good evening. My name is Mike Lauderbein, and I've been a science teacher here at Fenton High School for eighteen years. My favorite thing about Fenton is the collaborative spirit among all of the staff. My colleagues and supervisors have always supported me when I have needed help, and they constantly remind me that our goal is to work together to better support our students. I'm aware that we are in the midst of a contract negotiation. It is important to me that the Board of Education and the Association negotiate a fair contract. Thank you very much.
Next speaker, Sue Gaska.
Good evening, my name is Sue Gaska, I am a special education teacher. This is my thirty-second year teaching. I have only taught at Fenton High School, but yet this is my first time speaking at a board meeting. My favorite thing about working at Fenton is working with young adults to foster a love and understanding of math. I'm aware that we are in the midst of a contract negotiation, and it is important to me, as well as to my union brothers and sisters, that the Board of Education and the Fenton Education Association negotiate a fair contract. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, Kelly Lamy.
My name is Kelly Lamy, I've been a science teacher at Fenton for nine years. The thing I love most about Fenton is my students, especially the moment that they discover something new about the magic that is the world around them. I am aware that we are in the midst of contract negotiations, and I would hope that the Board of Education and the Association could negotiate a fair contract. Thank you so much for serving on the board.
Next speaker, Janet Han Canavas.
Good evening. My name is Janet Han Canavas, this is my fourteenth year at Fenton High School, teaching math. I am privileged to spend my day with the most amazing fourteen and fifteen-year-olds. They are the reason I get up in the morning, and sometimes the reason I don't sleep at night, but that's a different topic. I am aware that we are currently in the midst of a contract negotiation. It is important to me, and I believe to my students, that the Board of Education and the Association negotiate a fair contract. Thank you for your time.
Next speaker, George Musman.
My name is George Musman, I've been a teacher at Fenton for twenty-one years. My favorite thing about Fenton is working at the home of the bison. That's because I've been in other schools that don't feel like home. I have friends and family who teach in other districts, and their experiences don't make them feel like they are at home. And unfortunately, there have been times before this board was elected where Fenton wasn't a home. What makes Fenton a home instead of a workplace is that at home we don't always agree with one another, but we do agree on our goals, and we just have different ideas on how to achieve them. I am aware, as I'm sure you all are, we are in the midst of contract negotiations. It's important to me that the Board of Education and the Association negotiate a fair contract with the common goal of providing great educational opportunities for all the kids in the home of the bison. Thank you.
That concludes our speakers for the evening.
Check. Thanks for coming this evening, and we appreciate the comments. Next, we have recognition, so, Dr. Benson.
Dr. Benson was just working out, excuse him for his attire.
All right, let's kick this off on a high note with choir student Aiden Torres. Aiden, come on forward. Aiden participated in an audition with the Illinois Music Education Association way back in September. He was then named to their ILMEA District One Choir, which includes most of the Chicagoland area. The recording of his audition was then reviewed for the ILMEA State Festival, and he was named to the All-State Honors Choir. Remember, this is the highest, most prestigious ensemble in Illinois. We are extremely proud of our performing arts here at Fenton, and pleased to honor Aiden here tonight. I'll now hand it over to Mrs. Serity Williams to share a few more thoughts on Aiden.
Thank you so much. A little bit more about the audition process. Aiden had to prepare five pieces. We started very early in the school year, he met with me weekly, along with the other students. He also had to prepare scales and triads, and then submit a trial audition to me so I could give him feedback, and then submit that via video to the state office. Once he was selected, as Dr. Benson mentioned, he participated in the ILMEA District Festival. But then a little bit more about the state festival. The state festival is three and a half days of intensive rehearsals from about nine AM to ten PM of singing, to get five brand-new pieces prepared for their performance. He had the honor of working with Dr. Brandon Williams from Rutgers University, and did an amazing job getting his pieces ready for that final concert. We are so very proud of Aiden and all of the work that he put in to be selected for the honors chorus. Congratulations again, Aiden.
All right, can everyone hear me? All right, so as mentioned, my name is Aiden Torres, and as mentioned, I was selected for the ILMEA All-State Honors Chorus. There are a few individuals I would like to thank tonight. I would first like to thank my choir director, Ms. Williams. Can I have a round of applause for Ms. Williams? Ms. Williams has taught me from the beginning, that with just a little bit of extra work, with just a little bit of repetition, you can achieve great things. My first round of auditions didn't go quite as well. My second round of auditions did not go well at all. But the third time around, I made sure to spend a little bit of extra time, and that little bit of extra time led me to a three-day festival at state. So I want to thank you, Ms. Williams, first and foremost. The second person I would like to thank is my mom. My mom has been a driving force my entire life, driving me to rehearsals, driving me to scouts, driving me to school, especially when she didn't want to drive me to school. As of recently, my mom's been in pretty indecent condition. She is currently well, she is resting at home, but I would just like to give a moment of recognition to my mom for being one of the hardest-working women I know in my life. Can I have a quick round of applause for my mom? And last but certainly not least, I would actually like to thank the entirety of the Fenton Music Department, including Mr. Garrett George, as well as Ms. Bray, for continuing to provide us music students with some of the best experiences we can have in the entire state. I really am grateful for this entire music program, and I am looking forward to spending one last semester with you all. Thank you.
Congratulations again. Is there more?
Got one more. Next slide, please. Just to clarify, it is Spring Spirit Week this week, and today is Adam Sandler Day. You got some movie, anyone? Grown Ups, that's right, Grown Ups Two, look it up when you get home. Okay. Let's move on now, we're gonna have the Olympics basketball team, come on forward. I feel part of the team today, that's ironic, but here we are. Now we welcome our silver medal Olympians to the stage. They truly had a magical season, dating back to January when they upset undefeated Glenbard South Raiders to clinch a spot in the Special Olympics Region C State Tournament. Before heading downstate, the mighty Bison starred in one of our pack-to-place games. We swept Morton in the doubleheader, the fieldhouse was electric, the fan support was unbelievable, it was just a really special time where we honored this team. Then in March, the same Bison went down to Illinois State University and upset Lions Township to qualify for the state championship game. They played Chatham-Glenwood in the title game, it was a close game, back and forth, all the way to the buzzer, we came up just a few points short. Literally, the whole school was on the edge of their seats with updates that day, as we were trying to find out how the game went. But we want to let you know that you made us all proud with your performance at the state tournament and your second-place finish. Now I'm gonna turn it over to Simon Sanchez and Emma Keel to share a few more thoughts.
Thank you. On behalf of the team, Coach Emma Keel wasn't able to be here, she's ill today, and myself, we would like to thank the Board of Education, administrators, teachers, and support staff for their support this season. Huge shout-out to the Bensonville Park District. We, in case you guys didn't know, we practice there, we use their facilities for practice, and they've been so generous to us, and they've just been amazing. Another huge shout-out to Ms. Julia Bray, she's been awesome all season, just asking me, hey, do you guys need anything for the team? She's been a huge help. Thank you to Ms. Rebecca Norris, I don't know if she's here, but she organized tremendous pack-to-plays, she did, her and Ms. Bray, they organize all that, I do nothing. And I believe we had the best attendance for our state send-off, so just to show how much the support the staff here, teachers, and everyone was out here to support the team. Shout-out to the parents, thank you for all the driving them to practice and all the support you guys do, yes. And last but not least, just, you know, a little bit about that championship game, like Dr. Benson said, it was back and forth, and we came up a little short, fifty-two, forty-eight, final score, but it was a great game. I cannot ask anything else, this team right here is, they work hard, and they're just awesome, so.
Take it all. Take all the cookies, the bags, it's all for you.
Okay, so, congratulations again. Next, we go right into the informational items.
All right. First item is really basically our student and learning highlights. This evening, we're gonna have Julia Bray, our assistant principal, talk about student activities, and our Director of Special Education, Rich Watts, is also here. What have we been doing, board, in regards to this last so many months, five, seven, eight months here? It's really to provide information regarding students and their learning, and learning as it is. For example, in August, we had Mrs. Kate Ward come here to announce to you our mantra and our focus for teaching and learning for this school year. In September, we provided you with the graduate class of 2022 profile. In October, we discussed state report card. In November, we talked about the courses we offered here at Fenton. In December, Mr. Jason Mount-Meadle, our dean, spoke about MTSS, attendance, and other interventions. In January, we discussed incoming ninth-grade profiles from District Two and District Seven. February, Mrs. Papa Nicolau was here to talk about college and career pathways, all exciting. And this evening, in March, we have Ms. Julia Bray and Rich Watts here. Let's start off with student activities.
Hi, good evening, I'm Julia Bray, I'm the Assistant Principal of Student Life and Operations, and also the Division Leader of Fine Arts. I'm really excited to be here to share with you some great news about student activities. And I'll give you a little bit of background, I know that when I was here in June, I was telling you a little bit about myself, but I am an alum of Fenton, I graduated in 2002. And while I was here, I was involved in a lot of different clubs, activities, I was in choir, I was in band, I was in swing choir, I was in marching band, I was in speech, in basketball, student council, theater, all of these things, and that's where I really found a passion and a love for clubs and activities. I was really able to grow as a leader here at Fenton, which is why I'm so passionate about the work that I do. I am very fortunate to have the opportunity to work with amazing students, and amazing coaches and sponsors, and the work that we do here at Fenton is so important. And the work that we do here at Fenton is so important. It helps our students grow academically. It gets them ready for college and career and beyond in life. And it's really making really amazing citizens who are giving back to our community. A little bit more about myself. I am a community member as well. I live in Bensonville. My sons go to Tioga. I have three boys. So we're really active in the community. They play baseball. We are involved with music and all of these different things. So I am around town. I'm all over. They're here with me all the time, so they love being here as well. So this is definitely our home. This is where we love to be. They love to be here. So I'm excited to give you some news about our clubs and activities tonight. I was joking in an admin meeting that when I opened my phone, I don't really know what picture's gonna pop up next. Is it gonna be my own kids or is it gonna be the school kids? I have tons of pictures of our kids and our students here. And those are just some of the amazing things that we have done this school year. We've got state send-offs. We had a senior sunrise. We did hot chocolate with our swing choir performing. We just had the spaghetti with a song. We had an amazing Women's History Month and Women's Opportunity, a Leadership Summit for our young ladies. And we had some gentlemen there with us as well. So these pictures are ones that I love seeing pop up on my phone and come across my screen all the time. With our clubs and activities, this year we have really focused on four main goals. We have focused on building relationships with our students. We know that with our clubs and activities, our coaches and our sponsors, we really want to build those relationships. We want our students to build lasting relationships with our coaches and our sponsors so that they feel comfortable and that they know that they have trusted adults here in the building. We want our clubs and activities to be relevant for our students. We want the clubs and activities to be important to them, to have meaning in their life. We are growing amazing leaders here. All of our clubs and activities provide opportunities for our students to grow as leaders. And we want to empower them as well. We want them to be contributing members of our communities of Bensonville and Wooddale. And so those four things are really what we have focused on this year with our clubs and activities. With our current programming, Fenton-sponsored clubs, so these are approved through our contract with the FBA. We currently have 36 clubs and activities on campus. Some are competitive. They are course-related, some of them, honorary. They're hobbies and interests, and they're also music-related. We also have two clubs that are new and in our pilot status. Those usually run for about one to two years, depending on involvement. We also, with clubs and activities, we look at our 21st Century Grant with Frida Calo. We have nine active clubs. And with these clubs, they provide access to services and resources that improve the quality of life and public participation. They encourage opportunities for growth in various different clubs and activities. And we've also been able to provide tutoring after school and also some SAT prep for our students. A little comparison between last year and this year. So looking at our enrollment, last year we were at about 1,453 students. We had about 400 of them participating in clubs and activities. And then you can see the breakdown between males and females, with about 187 of those students coming from low-income backgrounds. Last year, we had 189 students in one club, more than one club or activity. This year, I'm very happy to report that we have seen a lot of growth. We have 760 students who are participating in clubs and activities. 386 of those are females. 370 for our males. So a big jump, especially with our males. 414 come from low-income backgrounds. And 329 of our students are in more than one club or activity. So all of this involvement translates in the classroom, right? We see them growing academically. We see them making good choices in our building, being good citizens, being responsible learners. All of this, all of their participation, it's amazing. It just creates this amazing vibe and feel in our building, and we are so lucky for that. Yes?
Is there, there was a big increase in participation? There's new clubs or services that were introduced that caused that?
No. And this growth, I mean, we could say maybe it's due to COVID. Those lower numbers were when we were coming back from COVID. I like to think that we are doing such an amazing job with our clubs and activities that it's all because of us. But you know, I think that our students are, they're looking for things to get involved with. They want to be involved. They want to be here. This is a great space for them. And so they know that they're safe here. And they know that they can come and they can be themselves here in our clubs and activities.
Thank you.
A little bit about our year. We started off the year with a Clubs and Activities Fair. So we wanted to make sure that our students right away were able to get involved. So we set up a Clubs and Activities Fair. We also had sports in that Clubs and Activities Fair with us in August. New this year, we started another one at the start of second semester. We called it an Involvement Fair. So that way it encompassed everything that we have to offer here. And we got some really good participation. Kids were signing up, becoming active in all of our clubs. These are just a few of the things that we have hosted this year through student activities. Obviously, homecoming is big with student council. They hosted our homecoming, which was a Las Vegas theme. We also had free hot chocolate in the whole month of December on Fridays for our students. And we had some music from Swing Choir and different clubs. We had a holiday tree decorating event. We also had a Purple Out in conjunction with the Young Women's Leadership Summit. We were able to work with District Two for the Young Women's Leadership Summit. They brought over about 100 of their eighth graders. And they joined us for a morning of a panel with some amazing speakers. We did some team building with them and we did some reflection on their own personal growth. We also have been able to, through Frida Calo, offer tutoring and homework help as well as SAT prep. So we've given students with SAT prep a lot of opportunities to join us Tuesdays, Wednesdays, Thursdays, whatever works for their schedule, any way that they can come. And if they haven't been able to join us in person, we did have an option for them to do that through Khan Academy, through our ingenuity as well. They were able to do some online work on their own.
Could you explain Frida Calo again?
Sure. So Frida Calo is a grant that we have. It is through the state. And we work with the Frida Calo organization and they, we are able to offer clubs that our students are interested in and we are funded through that grant. So those clubs that are Frida Calo, they are funded through that grant. We have clubs like a K-pop dance club. We have obviously our tutoring and our SAT prep. We have alas. We have a lot of different opportunities. In the past couple of years, we've also done a cooking club and this Frida Calo grant has also funded some of our summer programming.
One of the clubs played at the Carmas, the Mariachi.
Yes. Oh, the mariachi band as well. We also are trying to stay connected with our families and our communities. We have been promoting all of our activities this year. Open House, obviously, we had a big turnout for that. We had a Bison Fan Shop. We'll have another one in the spring. We welcomed over 200 students from the Class of 2027 in January. And we also had an early grad send-off in December. And like Dr. Benson said, it's Spirit Week this week. So here we are, Adam Sandler Day. He didn't lie. It's right there. One of my favorite parts of this job is that I get to have Spirit Weeks and work with the students on picking some really fun days and spreading the word and getting that spirit and that really cool vibe and fun atmosphere here at Fenton. So our Spirit Weeks have been something really fun all year long. There's also another one coming up around prom. So, Dr. Benson, start planning now. We are not done this year. It is only March and we've got a long way to go. Our clubs and activities, we've already started planning for next year. What that looks like is we are starting to look at what we did this year and setting some goals for next year, looking at evaluating our programs and also planning calendars, looking at our space and our facilities and how we can get better for next year. Some of our students attended an Upstate Eight Conference Leadership Summit. They came back and they were just like, this is so cool. We have to do it here. So I had the opportunity to visit West Chicago and watch them do their leadership activities with some of their students. So we hope to be able to bring that Leadership Summit back here to Fenton next year. Looking for leadership opportunities and conferences for our students. Looking into having a leadership recognition for our students, our student leaders, anybody who's in our clubs and activities. And then also as part of our strategic plan, Clubs, Activities, and Athletic Council. Any questions? No? All right. Well, thank you for the opportunity and we look forward to seeing you guys soon.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Great job, Julia. And we have Rich Watts here. He's a rookie admin here at Fenton.
Thank you, Ms. Bray. All right. So I promised I would stay within this area so that I'm good with the mic. However, I like to walk and talk, so I will have to work around that. I'm going to be talking about special education highlights. I'm Rich Watts, the Director of Special Education here at Fenton. I have over 20 years of experience with special education students and over eight years of experience working as an administrator in that role. And I am immensely proud of our whole team here at Fenton. From the moment I walked in, it was obvious that we put students first. And every day after that, that's incredible. There are other districts that don't do that. So I mean, that is a fantastic tribute to Fenton and everyone here, all the families, community members, and teachers, and students. So I tried to figure out how to open this up and how to think about it. And I really thought about our Fenton belief statements. And I realized that they really drive everything that we do here at Fenton. And I think as we go through these, you'll understand why. And then throughout the presentation, you'll see more of that. We provide a safe, caring, and welcoming environment. Diversity, equity, and inclusion unify our community. School and home collaborate as one. We champion innovative teaching and engaged learning with state-of-the-art facilities. We infuse social-emotional learning into academics and culture. We prepare students to fulfill their civic responsibilities. And we saw some of that here tonight with our students, our Olympians, right? And behind the scenes, all of the mentors and the student assistants that go with those students that help support them. And we immerse students in authentic life experiences, which you'll also see here. It's really huge, important. Important piece of learning is the learning that happens in the community, in our grocery stores, in our parks, in our libraries, right? That students are welcome and that they come in confident. And our job here is to make sure they have that confidence. Let's talk about numbers. The state has seen an increase in special education students over the past three years, post-pandemic. Fenton has equally, has seen that rise as well, although to a lesser degree. But if you look, we have 13% of our students right now have special needs, where the state average is about 17%. When you look at the breakdown by disability area, students with, and these are students that have disabilities within Fenton, our students that have autism are at 10%, emotional disability are at 15%, intellectual disability are at 9%, disability is at 1%, other health impairments are at 9%, specific learning disabilities are at 53%, and speech are at 2%. I went through that kind of quickly because it's numbers, but when you start to think about those numbers and the impact they have, it's part of what drives my mission every day, to figure out how to best help each of the students that have disabilities and how to create a program that shows our vision of making sure that they are quality citizens post-high school. The legal background behind this comes from IDEA, the Individuals with Disabilities Act. It was last updated in 2015, and I also have a link up there for anyone in the community that would like to go on and dive more into it. But I thought, what are the top three ideas that, as a board member, I would want to know? School districts must provide a free, appropriate public education to children with disabilities. Students must have meaningful access to the same-age peers without disabilities whenever appropriate. And later on throughout the presentation, I'll show you kind of how we do that. And child find. All public schools must look for, find, and evaluate students who need special education, right? The way I look at this is not letting children fall through cracks, getting them at wherever they're learning, whatever challenges they have, and helping them grow to their potential. And it takes a whole team to do that. Our commitment to the future, oops, sorry, is that every special education student, bless you, at Fenton has a full team dedicated to creating and implementing a plan for success. These are called IEP plans. And within those plans, we have goals for post-secondary education, independent living, employment, and then academics. So again, every single student, from the moment they step into Fenton, actually, I'll take you one step further. Before they come into Fenton, I meet with the junior highs and I work on those goals coming in. So that way, it's not the first thing they hear when they walk in the door. I'm talking about what is their passion? What is their goal for after high school? What do they want to do? And some kids say, I don't know yet, right? I didn't know yet. And I tell them that same thing. But the idea is there, that we plant the seeds. And then by the time they're seniors, and our teachers, some of them are here right now, they know how to get them to the end goal, right? They say, oh, well, let's do this. Why don't you join this club, all of Ms. Bray's clubs that she mentioned? And students thrive when they're a part of that community. And that's what we do really well here. And that's what I think Ms. Bray touched on really excellently earlier. All right. So our Fenton Special Education Team. So because every student has an individualized plan, right? We have to figure out how to help them, and where do we start? Well, it starts with an evaluation, to figure out what is the core concern, right? And from that, we have a whole team of individuals that I won't read off because they're all up there. You'll see them. The school is full of professionals that are geared towards helping students wherever they struggle. Reading specialists are not up there, but we have those as well. Like making sure that our students are getting the support they need everywhere throughout the building. We have counselors that I'm proud to work with because they put special ed students first. And I just said counselors, but everybody. Everyone that I have worked with so far at Fenton, like, they say, what do your students need? And again, for those of you who are, like, I'm new to Fenton, but I've been in the business for a long, long time. This is a wonderful thing. And I just want to go to the rooftops and shout that out because that's where I usually try to start our teams, but we're already there. Which means that I can go to our kids, I can go to our students and say, let's get you to your end goal. What do you want to do? What do you want to be? You know, and it just, it gets there that much faster and our kids grow that much more. They can join that many more clubs. It's just a wonderful thing. We have a strong, valued partnership, I think you all know, with NedSec, the Northview Page Special Education Cooperative. Sorry. Within our school, we have our Economic Life Skills Program. And again, this is where it really helps us to have this program within our school because this is where all of our students see this. This is where our student volunteers step up and they say, how can I help? And they come to our offices and they ask for ways. And whenever I stop by Ms. Bray's office, she has students in there all the time that are asking, how can they best help our students? And it's not just our life skills students, it's everyone. But I think that that just shows the community. Lincoln Academy is our public therapeutic school. And then TLC is our Transition Learning Center. And I'll tell you more about each of these programs here in a moment. My apologies, but by the way, I had to use the computer too because I was afraid my vision wasn't so good and I couldn't see the board. All right. Academic Life Skills Program. Life skills teaching focuses. We focus on academics. We focus on communication skills. So when I walk in and I'm So when I walk in and I'm, you know, working on just basics, "Hi, how are you?" And having that good response. We saw it here, students that are open to be able to share, you know, and just fully be a part of the community. Motor skills, behavioral skills, social skills, pre-vocational unemployment skills, and your daily living skills. Every day, we have teachers that are working on all of these things and all of the lessons. And they combine them all into one lesson, so the students don't even know they're learning certain things. It just kind of happens. And again, for those, like, if you come visit, it's just a beautiful place to be. Like, it's like watching magic. And just again, the growth that happens over time. More about our life skills. Again, they learn cleverly throughout Fenton. This is where it helps to have students right here in our building because they're in our hallways. They're, they are us, right? All of us. So we're all learning together. This program here at Fenton currently serves students from Bensonville and Wooddale. Other programs that have this type of program, they'll serve different communities. I'm proud that, like, all of our students are from here. So like, when I go in and speak with them, like, I'm talking about their communities and about like what they're doing, and restaurants, and things right in the area. And it's just, it kind of gives them that sense of community because they're not being bussed in from, you know, miles and miles away, which happens in some places. Here, they're local. Like, they're coming right to their neighborhood school. They're right with their general education peers. It's a beautiful thing. Back to the eyes thing. All right. So we leased, we leased the space here from, NedSec leases the space from us at Fenton here. And we actually have a growing population. We're looking at up to a 45% increase over a four-year span. So we're going to be opening two classrooms this coming year to best help the students. Our Olympic team, that we celebrated today with the silver medal, sorry. Teamwork, sportsmanship, goal-setting, adventure, like, all of those bison pride elements, those are all excellent. I wanted to show some photos from our community, from our CBI, as they're called, the Community-Based Instruction, where students bus to different places in the community to get, to further their, to further their education. For our trips to the Bensonville Library, there are cooking classes, art therapy, book club, documentaries, gardening. They go there at least once a week, sometimes twice. Our Bensonville Park District, we have complimentary, they have complimentary fitness memberships, recreation opportunities, and community participation. Again, being involved in the community. And then you may have seen our students at the grocery stores. Our students from our Life Skills class, our TLC class, they all go to the grocery stores together. And that's all part of a larger curriculum, where we're working on, like, how do you go through magazines and pull out what are the best deals? How do you go to, how do you budget for meals? How do you plan for meals? You know, in some of the more advanced classes, how do we take and measure to make sure that we're cooking correctly? And then with help of, again, we have peers, I'll show you later on, and staff, like, cooking those meals within our building here and then sharing that out. And at the grocery stores, they work on price comparisons, again, money management, budgeting, cooking prep, self-advocacy, being able to ask for items in the store, like, things that are often taken for granted. But again, skills that really do help our students day-to-day. Okay. Back to the civic opportunities, again, from our, from our bison beliefs, right? How do we have all of our students grow together? We have bison buddies who help our students, right? Who are all involved and doing different things. Like, maybe you've read the articles in the paper from the trunk-or-treat celebration or different types of things that happen in the neighborhood. Our bison buddies are right there with our students, helping. The adapted PE student leaders. Again, our students all take PE. We make sure of that. This is why we make that happen. And again, we have student leaders who step up, and those student leaders, again, also grow along with all of our kids. And then the Special Olympics volunteers. It takes a village. So we all work together, and this is just, these are just some of the things that we see every day. I just wanted to share this out. And it was hard to find, somewhere, Ms. Bray, hard to find the right pictures, right? Because there are so many. Actually, some of these are here are videos that I was debating. Do I show the video of the weightlifting? Because it really is cool. But I'll start with the picture for now. But if you reach out, I'll share the video. Again, our community, we packed the place. When I first saw that idea come up, when we were talking about it, it was brilliant. And then the turnout was astounding, right? We had the whole gym filled. Dr. Benson did the intro, you know? It had the professional sports, it was, it was great. It was good stuff. And our band, and everyone else was there. It was, it was excellent. Oops, sorry. All right. So now back to some of the legal ends of it. So we have to have a continuum of services for every, every school has to have this to make sure our students' needs are met. We have, right now, we have 20 of our, 20 of our AP classes, our Advanced Placement classes, have special education students in them. To me, that's a great success, and I hope to grow that for next year. We have general education classes with teachers that reach out to me and say, "How can I help?" Again, a blessing. Co-talk classes taught by a general education teacher and a special education teacher, where they work together, where our goal is to, where students can't tell who is who in the classroom because they're all learning at once, that community feel. Smaller classrooms taught by a special education teacher that follows the same curriculum. Again, for our students that may need a little more help, a little more guidance, right? And then if they even, even more guidance, then we go to an alternative curriculum. But those are all here within Fenton. And then classes that are centered on social-emotional learning. So you know, our day and age right now, this is a major issue. And we make sure that we have students' needs met, and they're met within our building. Our goal is to keep them within Fenton, to keep all students within Fenton whenever possible. Now, on occasion, we have students that need more assistance than what we can provide here at Fenton. All right? That's where our public therapeutic school comes into play. And our, we have one through NedSec. Again, lucky to have that. They focus on self-awareness, self-management, social awareness, decision-making. And the best part about having that be a part of Fenton through NedSec is I have instant access to all of our students. It's close by. I probably visit it twice a month and actually see our kids in action with the end goal of being to bring students back to Fenton. Right? That's, that's the end goal always. If it's not possible, though, then we make sure our students are learning and they get their diploma. And through board packets, you may have seen some of these names up here, Metro Prep, Glen Oak, SEAL. And I just wanted to kind of bring this to your attention so that you knew what they were. Those are our private therapeutic schools. This is kind of when the, the most intense social-emotional and behavioral needs, that's where those are met. And again, our goal is to bring them back, but make sure they have the quality education they need at this moment in time. Okay. A little more about our TLC. It's our Transition Learning Center. It's for 18- to 22-year-old students. And the focus is on pursuing post-secondary education, vocation, independent living skills. We partnership, I say we because I'm part of TLC too, right? We partner with College of DuPage. And we have several students that attend both TLC and COD simultaneously. We have some students that are at TLC and out in the workforce through workforce coaching and other, other measures to help them so that they can get quality, sustained employment. Because again, that's our, our goal, that they are either in, in college or they're working and quality citizens and doing the best they can as part of our community. So here are some pictures from, from the program. We have students that, and they'll use our Fenton site also. We have students that are participating in Recreation and Leisure. We have the TAP, which is the Illinois Autism Program, Annual Walk for Autism. And we have students that are helping to maintain a garden and greenhouse. Just wanted to show you some of the in-community action items that we do. And we are always looking for more. So I'll show you at the end of this, I'll show you a list of all the communities and all the, all of the businesses that have reached out to say, you know, "How can we help Fenton students?" And I'll, I want to give them accolades because it's, that's how we get there. Okay. Here are some photos of students that are participating in vocational training, again, within stores, within the library. As I put in the, in the article in the paper, our students get the real-world chances to learn those skills. That helps them for a lifetime. Okay. So to give a shout out to some of our paid partnerships and employment, Ace Hardware, Bensonville Library, The Bridgeway Senior Home, Quartz Plus Elmhurst, Earth Paint, E-Works Electronics Recycling, Edge Ice Arena, Jewel Osco, La Huerta, McDonald's, State Farm, Walgreens, Westin, White Pines, US Foods. And I was like, do I, do I want to actually read through that? But I did because those places that they've stepped up and they've said, "Let's, let's help our students," and we're always looking for more. So if you know anyone who is interested, I'm always recruiting places that will either train our students with paid partnerships or like they'll do unpaid internships, anything that gets our students that real-world access, we're always looking for that. All right. Our parent connections. Our next Special Education Parent Meeting will be April 27th here at Fenton. Our focus will be college, work, and recreation. Here are some of the partnerships that will be joining us. We'll have DRS here, that's our Department of Rehabilitation Services, our Parents Alliance Employment Project, College of DuPage, the Office of Access and Accommodations, and the COACH Program, that's two separate units. PACE and RTA will be here. NEDSRA, our Northeast DuPage Special Recreation Association, and Bensonville Library and Bensonville Park District will all be here on that night, and we're hoping you can join us. Thank you for your time today. Thank you, I appreciate it.
Any questions? So proud of this program. Robust, comprehensive. We start at middle school all the way beyond college. Great job, Rich, and Julia as well. Sorry, Jim. Next up is basically FOIA. We've received three FOIAS this month. I'll tell you all about them because I know you want to know. First one is from Local Smarts 265, which is the sheet metal workers requesting any construction and/or maintenance work planned this year with HVAC, architectural metals, scudders, downspout, lockers, bathrooms, partitions, kitchen renovation. Number two is Illinois Retired Teachers Association. They requested names of all licensed retirees as of June 30, 2023. And last one is UnionBids.com. They requested bid results and tabulation of STR project number 22072. All of these FOIAS have been resolved.
That is it for the recent reports.
Okay, great. Let's get to the consent agenda. And was there any comments, questions on any of these items? Yes?
Oh, no.
Mr. Kovak, yes?
Nobody.
Okay. Summer schedules, summer staffing, anything otherwise? We'll go right into approving it or not approving it, we'll vote. Okay. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented? And a second?
So moved?
Second.
Okay.
I'm sorry, who is the second?
Julia.
It's Julia, okay. Thank you.
And then may I have a roll call, please?
Regal?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Tingpongpong?
Yes, and motion passed. Next, we go to discussion, action items. We'll start with the DuPage County Response Crisis IGA.
We would like the board, we recommend that the board approve this motion. This is an IGA, Intergovernmental Agreement between DuPage County Public School Districts and Special Ed Cooperative, NedSec, as you heard earlier, to assist each other in, just in case if there is a catastrophe. What do we mean by that, a mass violence? Catastrophe could be an accident, like a train derailment or a fire, when, when a district cannot do it alone. So we're asking other districts to assist us if that happens. What's nice about this is that all of the school districts are unanimous that we do want to help each other. So this is just one of those great ways to help each other during times of crisis.
Questions, you guys?
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Can I get a motion to, okay, let me read it legally. So may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve that DuPage County responds to crisis in a governmental agreement as presented?
I'll make that motion too.
Second.
And Ken, for a second? Can you get a roll call, please?
Regal?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Tingpongpong?
Yes, motion passed. Next, we go to Certified Staffing Plan for the school year 2023, 2024.
Board, we do this every year. Basically, this is what it's all about. This is the number of teachers or certified staff we need in order for us to carry out and execute our student programming. What is the student certified planning plan based on? It's, as you heard Rich said today, it's comprehensive, it's robust. And we need teachers and adults to fill those positions to get those, all of those goals completed. Another one is, we want to make sure when our students sign up for a class that we have a teacher in there as well. And lastly, it depends on our population. You saw the number there, 1470, 1460. That's Fenton students, that's here in the building. Don't forget what Rich was saying, there was other locations like Metro Prep, other school district that we have studied. So we're really at about 1470, 1475, if we count all in, all students, even though they're not physically here with us. So real quickly, next slide, let me just go through this real quick. As you can see, all the department is on the far-left column. The years are the top-right row. So school year 2024, that's what we're looking at. And if you go all the way to the total, we're asking for 112 certified staff here, or 111.3 FTE. So why are you saying, where's the .3, .4, .5 staff? Some of them are part-time, okay? So how does that compare for the last five years? If you look at pre-pandemic, we're about 111, 111 again that following year. So we're consistently between 111, 112, 113. Anything after the pandemic has moved forward a couple of years further, we're going to land anywhere between 110, 111, 112. So nothing, we're staying pretty, pretty stable here.
Okay. Folks, any questions, comments? Okay. Then we'll move right to make a motion for the Board of Education to approve the, or adopt the staffing plan for school year 2023, 2024 as presented.
So moved. Second.
Mary, can I get a roll call, please?
Regal?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Tingpongpong?
Yes. And motion passed. Next is the resolutions and notices of non-renewal and dismissal.
So Board, we recommend that you all approve this motion. Notice of non-renewal is an annual event for a select number of staff, so.
Is this number higher or lower than average?
It's about average, the number that we have.
I couldn't recall, I just, that was my only question.
It's a little higher than last year, but it's not anything out of the ordinary.
Can you explain, I'm not sure, what is this notice of non-renewal?
Yeah, some individuals, it's, some of them is due to performance, and some of it's for other rationale. But yeah, these conversations have been had. They're aware, they're all aware. They were all made aware a long, you know, a while ago, so, yeah.
And do they usually just?
And do they usually just, give their own, am I having a brain freeze right now? Do they usually give their own, somebody help me out here. Do they quit? That's, or do you let them go? Do they put in their own notice?
They are, they are given the option to do so.
It's not the words I meant to use, but I can't come up with them.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah, they're given the option.
Okay.
Okay, thank you. May I have a motion that the Board of Education adopt the resolution and notices of non-renewal and dismissal as presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Kent.
Second.
And Leo? And a roll call?
Regal?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Tingpapong?
Yes, motion passed. Then we got the copier lease agreement.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
Yes, good evening. Twenty minutes? Okay. I won't take any more than twenty. As we discussed previously in a committee meeting, we have two large multifunction copiers made by Conica Minolta. They're about a year past their anticipated lifespan, so we're requesting that we replace those with these two devices. These Accuro Print 2100. And the lease will begin in August. We will actually receive these sooner than that, though, but we're asking for your approval of this.
So part of business operations.
That, that dollar amount, that's going to be the monthly payment?
Annual payment.
Oh, that's an annual?
Annual payment, yeah.
Over how many years?
Five years.
Oh, all right. Does that lease includes, what else does it include? Maintenance?
It, there's two components. One is leasing the actual device. And then there's an additional, what they might call a click charge, a per-page cost. That's a sub-cent cost per page that includes all the maintenance, toner, that type of thing. So it's.
All inclusive?
Yeah, yeah. It's, so that's already budgeted. The click charge will actually go down, because it's slightly lower with these machines than what it was with the previous machines. So that'll actually offset some of the lease payment as well.
This is a high, high-traffic, high-usage.
Yes, these are, yeah, these are very large, what we consider production-quality machines, production-class machines. High-speed, lots of features, binding, hole punching, stapling, that kind of thing.
All right, thank you, Dr. Any other questions? Let's get right to the votes. They have a motion that the Board of Education approves a five-year lease of two Conica Minolta Accuro Print 2100 multifunction copiers beginning August 1st, 2023, with an annual payment of $4,082.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, John. Roll call.
Regal?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Tingpapong?
Yes, motion passed on that as well. And we get to the Chromebook purchases.
Again, something we discussed in committee meeting earlier. We're looking to replace, not replace, but purchase 355 Chromebooks for the incoming ninth-grade class. We do this every year. They're partially funded by our Title I grant funding. And so for your approval, recommendation to purchase these Lenovo Chromebooks.
Yeah, so bottom line, it's cost-effective, better technology.
Yes, yeah, better technology, improved features. It actually, by comparison to last year, we purchased about the same number. The price went up about $2,100 or something in total. So they really, it was an incremental increase, not like, you know, other things that have gone up quite a bit, so.
You mentioned, I think, that the Title I grant didn't go quite as far as it had before, is that correct?
That's correct, yeah. Our Title I funding this year was somewhat lower than it had been in the previous years. So we're covering a slightly larger percentage of this cost with our own budget, which we were able to do. We were able to cover.
Very good, thank you.
Okay. So without any other comments or questions, may I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the fiscal year 2023 purchase of 355 Lenovo 500E Chromebook computers from CDWG for the amount of $181,907.96.
So moved.
Second.
And thank you, Kent. Thank you, Sylvia. And a roll call, please.
Regal?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Tingpapong?
Yes, and motion passed. We get to the equipment recycling disposal list.
I almost got away. This is, periodically, we gather equipment that we either provide to a recycling company that will sometimes provides us some cash for it, sometimes just does us a favor and takes the things away. If we can sell them or get some funding out of them, we certainly will. A number of these are just going to be recycled because they no longer function. So these are primarily copiers and printers. You'll see the copiers, including the two that you just approved on this list. We have to do this because they're our asset, and if they're going back to the copier company, we have to identify them as being recycled or donated or whatever. So this is a list of equipment. We typically have a much larger list sometime during the summer when we're doing clean-out and replacing devices in classrooms and things, so.
I don't recall, do we get recycling credits, or do we actually have to pay somebody to recycle it?
Typically, we don't have to pay. There's typically enough in here that they feel they'll sell it for parts, something to that effect. It depends on the mix of items. So my next step is, once I get approval for this, I'm going to add this on some pallets, shop this list around, tell people what we have, and see what they do. Hopefully, we'll at least break even, but maybe we'll even get a couple of dollars out of it. Last time we did this, we got about, I think about $4,000 out of it.
That's good. Okay, let's vote on this too. So may I have a motion that the Board of Education approves the disposal of the attached list of old and obsolete equipment that is no longer useful to the district?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Kent. And again, roll call, please.
Regal?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Tingpapong?
Yes, motion passed. And let's get to the painting contractors.
Okay, just very briefly, this is for the painting work in the fieldhouse. The entire fieldhouse, the wrestling room, and the stairwell, we received three bids. And we are recommending the low bid from DES Painting for the fieldhouse. The alternate proposal, which would be the bleachers behind, in the fieldhouse, the wrestling room and stairwells, for a total cost of $49,250, which was the low bid proposal from DES.
Okay.
And again, this was gone over in our business meeting earlier.
This was in our finance meeting.
Finance meeting, yes.
Considerably lower than the other bid we received. It was very good news.
Question on the, on the painting, real quick. I'm seeing some examples here of mortar bed joints broken out and things like that. Will that be repaired as a part of the painting process, or are they just painting over that?
If they don't do it, we would do it, so yeah. It would be a combination of them and us making, it's probably some of the bigger, larger repairs we're going to end up taking on as we would in any other year, but yeah. Luckily, we have a contractor this year that will take care of some of it.
Awesome. Great partnership.
And we're confident that the low bid will meet standards?
We believe so. They were recommended, they've got some stellar references. They've worked with other architectural firms. They were recommended to us by our firm as well. So we're, we're confident that, yes, they can meet the, meet the job.
I mean, throwing a high bid out is one thing, but there's still a significant difference between the two other. I just want to make sure we're getting quality work.
Yeah, we'll, we'll ensure that. I know Mr. Kovak did a walkthrough with all the proposed bidders, and they're aware of the work and, as I said, the references. But we'll definitely follow up with that and ensure that they are true to what they're, what they told us.
They have good references, I mean, we can only go by what we can go by. I just, there's still a significant difference.
It is, it is. It's always, yes.
We can hire them twice.
Yeah.
If we need to.
Do a good job. I'm sure we'll have more. Maybe we will. Good thought. We've got some other stuff we could paint down the line.
That's how good the bid was. No? I saw that number. All right. Great question, John. Anything else? And Kent?
No, I'm good, thank you.
All right, thanks. Then may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the proposal from DES Painting to complete the painting project for $49,250?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you, John.
I'll second.
And Kent? And roll call, please.
Regal?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Tingpapong?
Yes, motion passed. And let's talk about asbestos abatement contract.
This was for floor tile and mastic removal from two hallways. This is part of our annual cyclical tile replacement hallways throughout the building. And it would include Lower C hallway, so that's the second-floor hallway, the first floor of the second-story addition. And then the 500 hallways, which is the back hallway, the social studies wing. And as I said in the background, it's ongoing and targets the identified areas in the building to replace the tile in the hallways. We did receive three proposals. Two of the three have done work here before. We've been pleased and satisfied with the work they have conducted. They do specialize in asbestos removal. They would complete the work over the summer. We are recommending Cove remediation, which is the low bid of $24,600. And then this would be paid for out of next year's budget.
These bids were much closer.
Yeah, yeah. And we've used them before, so that, we have a comfort level with these guys, yeah.
You say we do this annually, how many halls do we have left after this?
That's what I was going to ask.
How many more hallways? Three more? Okay.
Safety first.
And that's what it is.
Learning spaces.
Just curious.
Clean and safe. All right, so may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the proposal from Cove remediation to complete the asbestos abatement project for $24,600?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you, Carrie. Thank you, Leo. Roll call, please.
Regal?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Figaroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Tingpapong?
Yes, and the project passed. Next, next discussion is discussion-only. It's, it's going, came from our group, and I wanted to maybe ask Kent to lead in with a little bit. It's the Connected Community Programming. Do you want to kind of give us some context?
So some context in this space is just around some difficulties I had before being on the board, of trying to reach into Fenton, to try to find ways to, as a community member, integrate and participate and interact with the Fenton community. And through that difficulty is how I ended up here with the help of Lewis and, that's right, it was Leo. I keep saying Lewis, I'm, I apologize, sir. Through Leo and others, but it is a kind of a passion thing for me. So I would like to try to find ways to find, just, you know, ways that the community can discover how to be, you know, interact with the Fenton. Think Fenton does a great job reaching out and saying, this is why we're valuable, this is what we bring to you guys. I just would love to see a way for the community to start reaching in and participating more outside of the outreach opportunities you guys have, that you're already engaging in.
I think there are many ways, I think there's many ways to participate. And it's usually, Kent, it's our, the parents of our students, whether it's the music booster, or the athletic booster, or the band booster, et cetera. Some of the volunteerism that we do take place here usually. Sam supervises, they usually go through him, and if they, if this is an individual that does not have any children or students here at the building, I'm sure we could find them a location. I'll be honest, it's rare. You're one of those rare individuals, but if there are some folks here watching, the person to ask is either Dr. Benson here, our principal, or Rick Hembek there as well, as our public relations. We would like to utilize individual, especially to assist our, our goals here at, at Fenton, whether it's fundraising, whether it's assistance with the Fenton Foundation, and with the strategic plan. I think those are all important. Sam, did you, go ahead.
Say, what's the mechanism to discover that I need to talk to Sam, or who I would need to talk to to do that?
Yeah, I'm just thinking, we have, you know, like, for example, with our career pathways, we build some more connections with some older businesses and things like that, that can kind of lead to some sort of connection. Sometimes it may have to do with like a particular skill set or expertise someone has. You know, I know you have expertise in technology or whatever, maybe depending on who's interested, what are they interested in, where do they want to volunteer, how, what are their interests in it? Maybe we can find kind of a individualized connection for them. But you're right, there isn't necessarily this, hey, we need volunteers for this event, this event, because typically, we staff it ourselves, or parents are there in some way. So we appreciate the different lens, didn't really think about it from, from your perspective, but obviously, you're someone that's passionate, wants to be involved, and I'm sure there's others like you out there. So I'm not sure how we, we get that across, but, you know, certainly, I know you were making inquiries, and now you, here you are, so. But not everyone's going to be on the board, right? And not everyone is going to know who to talk to. So I think these are good questions we got to reflect on. But I think the key would be what, what is someone, how do you want to help? What do you, like, for example, if it's a dance, we're not going to have community people coming in chaperoning the dance. That's just, we'll, we'll take care of things like that. But what other opportunities perhaps could we do?
Because you felt that you kept hitting a wall every time you tried to reach out to somebody you were.
Met with silence, or we'll get back to you, and. You know, that was the, that was the thing. And really, it was also like going to the site and, oh, volunteers, click on that. First thing you ask is, who's your student? That immediately tells me we're not interested in, in folks who don't have a student here volunteering. And maybe that's not the intent, but that's definitely the message that's coming across. And when I, I heard someone else also say that the spaghetti, the spaghetti thing that we had this, was it last weekend?
Spaghetti with song?
Someone else said, hey, yeah, I reached out and called through and was able to get ahold of somebody to start volunteering. I just kind of go, wow, someone had to spend a lot of time to do this, right? If I don't have as much time, or I'm curious, or wanting to participate, but we may get really high barrier to entry. That just, I worry about that perception of, from the community. But I also know it's balanced against the fact that we have to do background checks, we have to do vetting of these individuals. There is a financial cost to that. We don't want to have 100 people say, hey, I want to come and help, spend all that time and energy to vet, and then only have one person actually show up. So I know it's a balance, I know it's something that you guys will have to figure out. But it's one of those things where I'm just curious about what we can do to be more, you know.
Yeah, that's good.
I know Jose and I were discussing this a little bit, and one of the things that came out was, at our homepage, a volunteer clicker, as you suggested, or at another one was, as you know, we do a weekly newsletter. Probably just have a continuous, interested in volunteering? Call this number.
That makes sense.
There could be.
Especially if it's personalized, yeah.
Well, there could be a form online, on our website, just a form that says, you know, interested in being involved or engaged in Fenton. And you could have categories like, you know, non-parent, retired, parent, you know, something like that.
Yeah.
Alumni.
And, you know, and here's the thing, like, we've got such a great school, great facilities, great staff, great teachers, great students. And, you know, we, in a way, we do owe it to our taxpayers to have easy access to getting involved and getting engaged. I think there's an opportunity here where the community can really see the good job that we're all doing. opportunity here where, um, the community can really, uh, see the good job that we're all doing, you know, not only from, you know, the, um, you know, the depress, or, or the accolades, or all, all those are great, but to actually be in it, you know, be, be in, in the, in the process. So, I, something to keep in mind, I know it's, you know, extra ideas and labor, but I, I feel there is an opportunity here.
There definitely is. It's just, we just gotta construct it in so many ways. Sorry, I still believe you were gonna say.
Oh, no, go ahead.
But we had Polish outreach, we had Padres Unidos, we had Kerma's, we have the foundation, we have the boosters, so, hey, look, special ed, uh, parent outreach, um, I think those things are, are, are available as, as well. No, but it is important to put it in our radar. It's just, how do we construct it and funnel it in the right way?
I was just going to say that, um, there has to be someone assigned specifically to, you know, address if there, even if there is an app, uh, application or, uh, a form online, if it doesn't go to anyone, it's, you know, still it defeats the purpose of having forms. So, if there's someone that's specifically assigned to, you know, reach back out to the person that's looking to volunteer and let them know what process there is to volunteering, if they're a parent or not, so.
Go ahead.
I'd just like to add to Kent's point about the difficulty of non-parents wanting to get, get involved here, volunteer. Prior to my gracing your board, I have had former students or alumni, who participated in sports, looking to do the same thing, but got crickets, or no response from anyone. And I guess this was just during my time, they knew me from the years coaching, and, and it was just a moment where they expressed frustration. They saw the situation they could provide some assistance in and help. They reached out, but couldn't get any response from anyone.
Maybe we could subcategorize to start on the website, like we said, parent, non-parent, alumni, and then have that report to specific people, and make sure we at least give them some sort of a response.
Right.
Make sure we, make sure we get back to them. That's all we're looking for.
Right. I really like what the brainstorming here. Um, also, just to, one aspect that we could follow, we'll bring this to our nucleus, which is our, our, our think tank here, is we have programs and activities already, perhaps, and there's individuals, Sylvia, responsible for the, for example, Padres Unidos is with Mr. Castro, Kerma's is usually myself. Um, and, you know, which one of these volunteering opportunities would you like to participate here at Fenton would probably be the leading question, right? Then, then go, okay, are you alumni, a non-parent, are you a parent, et cetera. It'll be kinda like a menu. Um, it's just one idea.
Good.
Oh, right. You'd have to let people know what those activities are. You could, yeah, um, yeah.
But there still needs to be someone assigned to distributing those to each one of those. I mean, you don't want all, each.
Right.
You know, you wanna have just one person.
Right. Something I think, like, when we, we get messages from the community, there's a relatively small group of us to get it. James is quickly to jump in and say, Sam, you got this one.
Right.
Rick, you got this one. So I think, I think with that.
Who has technology?
Yeah, 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 that's right.
Dr. Bass, you have technology.
Yeah, I'm like, I'm like, John, I don't really need this, but, um, I, I think we can do that. So if it's, we get a core group of people, then we'll figure out, okay, this is what, this is who's gonna do what. So we can do that. Um, I know what you're saying, is it one person, but then we gotta, you know, who's that one person? Uh, who they, it, it's gonna be collaborative and something, so. I think we can start off that way.
So, maybe we wanna ask for a process put in place, and then get back to us?
A process, and, you know, like I said, I know there's risk management that has to happen with all of this. We have to do these other pieces, so, just, I mean, you guys already have probably a process that's out there. If we get it written down, and then just find a way to tell the community, hey, here's how you come in. I love the idea of saying, here's where we need help, right? You know, and it's not just, here's, we need help approve this bond initiative, or, you know, this thing here, but like, something I can physically do, so that way those of us who have time or energy, or don't have other ways of, of contributing, can show up and, and be a part of that, so.
Uh, so, so how to, how to plan and execute it based on, you know, operational and business needs? That, that'd be some, make sure there's a.
Let, let us take a stab at it. We'll bring it either next month or the following month. And Sam, you're responsible.
Okay.
No, th- thank you. Thank you for doing that, guys. Appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
Wasn't there a second part today? We had discussed, uh, how the board could be more involved in reference to the community. There was a second part.
Oh, that's right. Uh, you know, as far as, um, you know, like coffee with the superintendent, maybe, maybe coffee with a board member, or something like that? Okay. You know, where, uh, there, there's opportunity to give feedback, comments?
Love it, yeah.
After the election.
Okay, alright, yeah. We'll discuss that. Thanks for bringing that up too, Sylvia, that was good. I, I think that concludes the, uh, the consent agendas. Let's get to committee reports, uh, starting with the Benson Community Foundation. Was it, was it this month? Do you guys know?
It's actually, so it's supposed to be tomorrow, the twenty-fourth, is it the twenty, yeah, third, but it will actually be moved to the thirtieth, so.
Okay, so nothing to report tonight. Um, DI committee, um, we're looking to, uh, meet with the, the DI committee for the.
Teachers.
The teachers, yeah. And, you know, just get a report from there. And then I think we're having a possible meeting. We'll have to figure out if there's any content for the meeting first, and then we'll figure out.
Just so we know, we put you down, tentative DI meeting for April, except for YI two, we're doing another finance facilities meeting, this is the referendum, so.
Then we might not double up that, right? Okay, good. Uh, Finance and Facilities Committee, we went through that this evening. We voted on some of the topics here, so, nothing else to add, I would imagine. Okay.
Sounds about right.
Policy Committee, uh, no, nothing to report. IASB delegates, anything to report?
It's Julian.
Oh, nothing? Forget, every, forget my important role every single month. No, I have nothing to report.
Yep, um, I'm just thinking about IASB, anything else? Well, again, we're, we're having the, the national conference with COSBA, our, our new national association that's coming up here on the thirtieth of this month, so we're looking forward to professional and board development there. Um, I think that's it for now. And Len?
Len, we had two meetings, uh, one in February and one in March. All new, um, bills that has not been approved yet, um, really nothing to report. Um, I usually get a list of, of the, of the proposed bills, and I usually forward that to you, but really at this point, they haven't voted on anything, and nothing has law yet, so more to come.
I, I, you know, actually, for, for transparency and, and all this stuff, so to, just going back to the IASB, um, business, so this COSBA national event, um, so, uh, you know, it, it is being paid by, um, public funds to support the public, uh, the professional development and board development of the people, of the board members that could go. So, just to be very open to that. Nedsec, please.
I didn't attend to the meeting, but Mr. James was there.
I was his backup, pinch hitter. Um, really not much to report, as you, as like Fenton, um, Nedsec is under negotiation, um, more to come on that.
That concludes the committee reports. Uh, so the next board meeting is on Wednesday, April twenty-six, twenty-twenty-three at seven P M. With the tentative board, a DI committee we determined not, uh, scheduled prior to the regular meeting at six P M.
Okay.
May have a motion and a second to go into closed session, uh, for the purpose of the appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees of the public body, or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body, or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of the public body that is subject to the local government wage. Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with the act, uh, this Act Five Illinois C S one twenty-two C one. Also, the purpose of collective negotiation matters between the public body and its employees, or their representatives, or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees, according to Illinois Five Illinois C S one twenty-two C two. Uh, and discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed under the Open Meetings Act, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes, or semi-annual review of the minutes as mandated, mandated by section two dot, uh, zero-six, Five Illinois C S one twenty-two C twenty-one. Motion and a second, please.
So moved.
Second.
Uh, that would be Leo and Sylvia, and, uh, roll call, please.
Rego?
Yes.
Redzinski?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Hayd?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Tingpopong?
Yes, and we will go into closed session. We'll take a five, we'll come back at forty-five after, or fifteen till.
Yeah, what I'll do, what we're gonna, actually going, I thought it was, at the end of this year, so we planned a cruise in July, so I will still get along with that. But we'll probably travel more, at least to get that, get that out of my system, yeah. There's a lot of countries I haven't seen, so I wanna go to the National Parks. I've got family, and, uh, my nephew's out in California, but. Um, I don't know, yeah. My wife would love to do RV, and, yeah, she, she'd love that, so, I don't know if I wanna buy an RV, maybe I'll rent an RV, but I don't know if I wanna drive about, you know, park in the woods.
Unless you.
That's what I didn't want to use to do, and, uh, yeah, but, but they never really traveled, they thought they were gonna travel. They drove to the place, parked, and stayed there, you know?
That's what happens. It's not a beautiful idea, first.
Please don't let me fall asleep.
But, yeah, just, um, and I'll, I'll probably get into some balance here, where, you know, whatever that may be, whether it's. I'm like. No, we did? Yes. Families, my parents, I have a lot of stuff with them, you know, I really.
Right, so it was like, uh.
You know? So.
Classic.
He doesn't have a child. Two, two, yeah.
That was my.
She, she remembers.
Yeah, I agree, okay.
But, uh, yeah, well, we've got, um, right now. Well, she's, she, she's special needs, so, yeah.
Oh, absolutely.
But, um, you know, my, my, both my, my mom and my wife's, she takes care of that, so I'll probably help more, because they're both elderly, you know?
Yours is sandwich.
Yeah.
Quit!
Quit already, quit already.
You're telling us, quit!
Yeah.
Quit already.
Is that what it is? I'll have to remember that, yeah.
You're in the middle, you know, as far as the height.
Brutal. And then I had to say it super loud.
Yeah.
My older kids, and then, uh, and then, you know, my, my kids, especially, it's gotta add them again. You and wife being gone, I need to take care of my daughters.
Mm-hmm, yeah. So, yeah, we'll, uh, we'll see how that, how that goes. But, uh, yeah, she's, she's there. And he's, my son's twenty, he'll be twenty-two next May, so there's a pretty big gap in between the two.
So this, this.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it's the parent outreach stuff, you know, we've done a lot of that, you know, so. Yeah, so, you know, I mean, everybody's, everybody's got a story, you know, so. Yeah, I don't know, go, go, go ahead, don't let me hold you.
Okay, let's get going. Sorry, guys.
Another session, March twenty-second, two thousand and three.
How are you, Jose? Staying for the next Powell, huh?
Oh, no, I got dismissed, so. I, I believe in you.
Bruce Martin.
Julio Figaroa.
Take care, Jose, thank you, sir. So you're covered, but that's fine, sir. We did it twice.
Carrie Lewis.
Sophie.
John Rizinski. Nancy Kovak.
Yes, yes, motion passed. We're back in open session.
Jim, you ready for us?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
All right.
Can I, could we do the closed session first?
Do that first?
Yeah.
If we do that.
Yep, so we got to take action on one thing. And so this is a discussion on board of education review close session minutes. Okay, so may I have a motion and a second if the board of education approves the need that confidentiality still exists for the following closed session minutes and they will remain in the closed file.
So moved.
I'll second.
Kent and John and roll call.
Regal?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Rzyszynski?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pong?
Yes, so motion passed.
Kit? If I'm, if I may, and I apologize, the, the copier motion was actually, and John, you sort of triggered that and then Bruce, it's not per month.
It's annual.
There was a typo. It was actually, that's per copier. It's an annual price per copier. So if, since it's on the agenda, we're still in the same meeting, we can revise and, and revote on that. I would really appreciate it so that we get that corrected for the record.
Jim, real quick, what did, does it say when you voted on it?
Okay, so the motion was, um.
I got it.
Yeah, it, no, I got it, was for $4,082. Um, the lease of two Konica Minolta 2100 multifunction copiers beginning August 1st, 2023 with an annual payment of $4,082. That should be double that because that's per copier. So it should be $8,164.
Okay.
Which is still.
Per machine.
Yeah, $4,000 was per machine, yeah, which is still really good.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, so then I, going back to that, it's a copier lease agreement. May I have a motion and a second for the board of education approves the five-year lease of two Konica Minolta Acura print 2100 multifunction copiers beginning August 1st, 2023 with an annual payment of $4,082 per copier. That's two total.
With a total for $8,164.
$8,164.
Yeah, total.
Total.
Total per year.
Yeah, per year.
Per year.
Two copiers.
Second.
Motion and a second? Was John and?
No.
No. Kenny, I'll second.
Kent. Kent.
Kenny Carey.
Kent and Carey.
Kent Carey, Kent and John, Kent and somebody.
I'd like saying so moved.
Regal?
Yes.
Rzyszynski?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Lewis?
Uh, yes.
Ting Pao-Pong?
Yes, motion passed. Okay, Kent and Sylvia, roll call please, finally today, tonight.
Regal?
Yes.
Kovak?
Yes.
Lewis?
Yes.
Rzyszynski?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Hade?
Yes.
Ting Pao-Pong?
Yes, and everybody get home safe. Have a good night. Reach out. Thank you.